Please stand.
I'd like to leave this speech in the light of the United States of America, the United Republic, for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
My computer doesn't want to print them, so I will guide you all through your agenda tonight. There's nothing really new in nobody.
Oh, that's right. We didn't print one. It was cruising, right?
My computer's not talking to the printer right now, so we're saving paper.
Sometimes it has days like that.
Yeah, everybody has their days.
Perfect.
Yes, so would you like to start with your blurb? Do you want to read your speech?
Yeah. I'm looking for my notes. The rules of procedure adopted annually to ensure productive meeting. The select board meetings are in the public, not of the public, meaning the members of the public in attendance are entitled to the opportunity to comment, but the purpose of the meeting is for the board to be able to effectively and efficiently conduct the necessary business to govern the town. All questions and comments shall be directed to the chair, and the rules of procedure indicate that there will be two minutes allotted for comment from any single person on any single topic. The rules of procedure are posted in the town hall and are available for anyone to review. Thank you.
And tonight, we have Mike Beecher, Jessica Van Orte, Perry Brown, and Rich Hewlett, and I am Kristin Powers. And everybody else, please be sure to sign in on the sign-in sheet at the table. We also have our Zoom participants here this evening. A reminder that if you have something to say, please address the Chair of the Board. I think that covers it. In terms of addition or deletion, so we have an addition of an executive session to discuss labor relations agreements with employees pertaining to the Highway Department. Also, did we determine that Harley was going to be pre-requested? Did Harley, you requested to be under pre-requested this evening?
Oh, I just...
How did we?
It can go wherever. We could do a pre-requested.
Okay, so then Harley will be a pre-requested appearance. I have no deletions, and the minutes that need approval are from the last meeting, which was December 12th.
Oh, and I'm just adding that under Old Business, we're going to have, we need to decide if we're going to accept the mini grant. We have to update on that.
I'll move to approve those minutes.
Have a second on the minute?
Yeah, I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carried. Any announcements, sir?
No announcements, and we have pre-requested appearances, which is Harley.
Good evening. I'm approaching the Select Board for asking for approval to change the salary of the librarian assistant who's fulfilling the duties of the Director, developing programs, scheduling, tracking library use, and developing the collections of ordering books. The Board, Library Board, voted to change their salary from librarian assistant to the Director's salary from $16 and change per hour to $22.05. It will have no impact on the overall salaries for the library because we are down in employee...
Everybody understand that?
So I've just got one quick question. So what's going to happen? So is she going to be fulfilling the position that has been eliminated? Or I'm just curious, if you hire somebody else, then what's going to happen?
Oh, then she would no longer be fulfilling those duties, and she would go back to her original salary? If we are, when we, if and when?
Sue?
Yeah, the person being called interim director was never appointed interim director in an open meeting. When I asked the Library Board Chair three times how and which meeting she was appointed, the interim director, when she was appointed, the interim director, he finally told me that he decided to do that, he said, "On my own." I saw when I got my mail the next day that the librarian assistant was now listed as interim director on the appeal letter. She's yet to be appointed interim director by the library, although they did vote to raise her salary by almost $6 an hour. She doesn't have the education or the training to be a library director. There's no job description for this interim director. He just listed off a couple of things that she would be doing, but she has no training or education for that. And since the library director, she's working more hours since the library director was fired, but no additional training has she gotten for that extra $6 an hour. That's all I had to say.
I guess I got a question. Her, when did you appoint her? Because you're looking for retroactive pay to November 8th. Am I correct?
She's not been appointed. Sue Leport is absolutely correct that...
So that she wouldn't receive that pay back then? If you guys voted to make her interim director, then she could get paid the amount?
No change in title. The change in title has not been approved by the Board.
You just want to change the wages?
The wages because she's doing the job.
And she wants pay back to November 8th?
I'm requesting...
You're requesting that?
The Board is requesting that retroactive to November 8th.
Okay.
I've got one question, too. Just because the budget's already been set. So she has a clear understanding that if and when you fill the Director's position, she's willing to go back to the position that she previously had?
Absolutely.
Okay.
That's very clear.
And is she currently working more hours than she used to? And no one has stepped into the position that she used to have?
She is working more hours than she used to. And she's working 23 hours a week by, I have to add it up, 11. So she's working 23 hours a week by 11, and we have another person covering on Thursday.
Excuse me. Frank?
Mine of order, should this be pushed off into the executive session for discussion as well as your other staffing? Because it has to do with payroll, which you definitely discussed. That was done in executive session previously, too.
Wage changes are?
So the fiscal year that we're currently in is the budget has been set, and the rates and the salaries for all these positions are public knowledge. So at this point, the pay rates are all public information. So there's not specifically anything that's not public knowledge about the nature of these questions, but good question.
Sue?
The pay for the library director was for Lindsey Burns, who had a master's, who has a master's degree in library science and decades of experience being a librarian. Someone who's an assistant librarian can't really do the same job as the librarian and therefore shouldn't be paid the same as what we were paying someone with all Lindsey's education and experience.
I have one more question for Harley. The Library Board is all in agreement?
Yes. Yes.
Four out of five.
Not for the retroactive pay rates. All five?
Well, in that case, I would move to approve it if she's fulfilling those duties and she has a clear understanding that when that position is filled, that she understands that she's going to go back to the position that she held. If she's putting more hours in and the Board feels like she's earned that, I would be in agreement with that.
Just one more thing, and I'll stop.
Does anyone want to second that motion before we have further discussion? I don't hear a second. Sue?
No, if you don't hear a second. I'm fine.
Go ahead.
I guess I'm just curious. I mean, that just kind of creates a problem for the person who would fulfill that position in the future, or you'd have to give them a pay raise if the money that you give them hourly is equivalent to what their education and their experience is. I'm confused by that. That it would be the same rate as Lindsey for somebody who wasn't able, I mean, I know she's putting the hours in, but I don't think it's the same. Not just, to me, moving forward, that could be problematic unless you wanted to pay somebody more. No?
May I have your name just for...
Sure, I'm Lauren Herbert.
Lauren Herbert, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Frank?
This is, in our office, we had a policy and procedure manual, so it was clear cut that at certain point, you had certain pay, and you did certain things, and you could get more pay and more vacation time and all this stuff. And then every employee signed off on the knowledge of that policy and procedure. And I'm sure you're familiar with that in the human resources area. I don't know if they have that. I'm just throwing that out there. Clarifies things a lot of times.
So Rich's motion was not second, so that makes it invalid, correct? Does anybody have a different motion that they would like to make?
I just would like to say one other thing, too. We put these boards in position to be able to make decisions. I mean, that's the main reason why I'm supporting you. If the Library Board that got put in that position thinks that that's what should happen, then I'm in agreement with it. So that's the reasoning behind that. Otherwise, what's the sense in having these boards?
The Library Board was voted on and approved by the townspeople at elections.
To me, I think it makes sense to give a raise to the person who's doing more work, but I do agree that if there isn't a job description for what work the person is doing in the new position that they're in, that it makes it a little tricky to understand exactly what the additional work is worth. And also, for me, the request for it to go back to a certain day, I'm a little unsure is that the day when Adele started doing extra work? I would, before approving it, for me, I would like to see job descriptions for the people involved, like we have for our road crew and our road foreman. Like, if we ask someone to do, I know we've been in a very similar situation with the road crew, asking someone to do the work of the road foreman, but we have a pretty clear and lengthy, I remember putting it together, description of what the road foreman's tasks are.
One, can I, just so everybody's aware, so the library does not, the staff of the library does not adhere to the same personnel policy that the Town of Pollet's employees do. That's just acknowledging your question, Frank, and just with regard to, you know, although we're under somewhat of the same umbrella, there are some, there's levels of independence of how their positions are structured and what the expectations are. Just wanted to add that about the personnel policy and those sort of job description natures, so.
Harley?
To Rich's point, because the salaries come out of the Town General Fund, then it's beyond the scope of what the Library Board can do, hence bringing it to the Select Board. It's the developing programs that is the primary task that is very time-consuming and at a higher level than the circulation desk. And hence, that's the significant thing. And the programs being developed are healthy and numerous, and the feeling is she's doing that job.
Would the Library Board be willing to put those, put those expectations into writing?
Yes.
In the form of a job description for the former position assistant librarian and for the additional tasks that fall under the purview of library director that now the assistant librarian is doing?
We have a job description for library director. I will, I will, at the next board meeting, bring that request to the Board and provide a job description, what's different now compared to librarian assistant.
That would be personally what I would, what I would look for.
Is it because of the more hours that she wants the more money, or the more responsibility it's taken her longer to do so that she wants the extra money?
Clarification, she never asked for the extra money. This was an observation I made... That the person is doing the job, and the expectations for her were much higher from the Board during this interim time. And so this was, this was not, just to clarify that Adele's not asking for more money.
And she has an assistant that's coming in one day a week, right? Or somebody that's just covering for her?
Another employee at the library, and she covers Thursdays. And we have, we also are relying on volunteers to cover the hours as well. And we're expanding the hours.
Okay, so right now, does anybody on the Board want to make any motion regarding this? Think how Rich didn't get a second? Or do we want to wait for more information provided from the Library Board? I'd like to see a list of what were her expectations before, and now what you've got her doing now.
Yes.
Is it worth, what are we talking, $6 an hour?
Right. It does come down, I think the most significant thing is programs, but I will provide that in red.
Will you be able to provide that by the next Select Board meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I think, can I ask one more? Has Julie been, has it been asked whether or not it's possible to do the retroactive pay portion? I think that might be worth inquiring with Julie to just see how the systems work, just purely from...
I can inquire with Julie as the liaison to the treasurer.
Just to make sure if everybody's deciding to push it for another couple of weeks, that could be a question worth asking, just to make sure you've got all your info.
Thank you. Thank you.
So she is aware of the retroactive?
Okay.
She is?
Yeah.
Okay. And Julie? Okay. Oh, okay, so I don't have to inquire with her. She has, Julie has said that it could be done.
So she was aware, she was aware that they were looking for retroactive?
Yep.
Okay. So we'll table this subject till the next meeting, and then we'll move on. Okay? Thank you. Anything else under pre-requested?
Nope. And there are no announcements, so the zoning administrators' report is next.
Good evening, Nancy.
We are going to, looks like we're going to end the year with 39 permits issued for 2023. And the only other piece of business I have is that the last meeting, I provided each of you with the draft of the short-term rental ordinance, as well as the short-term rental registration form to make a registry of every short-term rental in town. And I was wondering if you had any feedback on those items, because from here, it'll go to legal and then come back to you for you to vote on, and then it has to go to a town hearing.
I'm sorry, Nancy, I haven't looked at them since we did them with the planning commission, so.
Okay, so can I ask you to be prepared for the next meeting to have comments on?
We can have that on our agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah, I will, I will make a note to look over it again.
The only other thing I wanted to add is that the state is taking over the piece as far as information and fire and safety, because there's been so much outcry from all of the towns as to who's going to place these short-term rentals if there's a situation or complaints, and that will be handled through the state.
So I did, Nancy, I'm sorry, I'm like trying to see here. I did, I did look at the thing you sent about that, and I wasn't, I couldn't quite tell from the document the state sent us what, so the procedure will now be that if, if a person in a long-term or a short-term rental has a complaint, they won't bring it to the local health officer?
I believe, is Jennifer online?
No, no.
I think it still goes to this, I believe, I'm not sure. I think it still goes to Jennifer, and Jennifer moves it up to the state.
Okay.
What I believe happened.
I was just, I was just looking for clarity on that because I wasn't quite sure.
Any other questions?
I didn't get a copy of that.
It should have been in your mailbox, did it?
It's probably in your mailbox.
Have you checked your mail, Richard?
Last time I did, I haven't yet this time.
I can, I can leave the draft, I'll leave this copy for you then.
Thank you.
Planning Commission's report?
No, no report, but I am just going to remind everyone that this Thursday, the 28th, at 7:30, will be our public hearing for the updated town plan, combined with our monthly meeting, which was not last night because of Christmas.
Okay.
All set there? The road foreman's report, so Rick sent along a message earlier today saying that the Highway Department continues to work on the trucks, identify and clear debris on roadsides, clean up the scrap metal at the town garage, clean the culverts. Today, they were hauling gravel to repair a mud hole, which was on the Pollet Rupert Mountain Road, and they are beginning the planning process for summer projects. Anything else that you had?
Nothing other than we have a loner truck coming because the new one that we had ordered is, of course, pushed out, and it keeps pushing out into next year. So they're getting us a loner, it's a single axle. They've identified the truck, they've run it through the shop, and now they're registering the truck, so we should have it within a week or so.
Okay.
This is just a single axle with a sander.
What are they looking at for delivery day now? Do they even know?
It's like next spring, or this coming.
Good thing we ordered it when we did.
And it's a good thing that they offered a loner if things fell through.
Because it might not see this winter, is what you're saying?
Pretty good chance it's not going to see this.
That means it's going to last longer.
But they, you know, they're willing to stick by their word. It's taken a little longer to get the loner than we had hoped, but they didn't want to send us down a piece of junk.
What's up with the international?
Well, we had, it needs a bunch of work. We hadn't done it. We were planning to put it on auction time and sell it.
Okay.
Who, who's fronting the loner?
ATG.
Okay.
We'll have to insure it.
Right, but it's all coming from where we're purchasing the truck?
The cabin chassis.
So that, the cabin chassis is what's holding up the whole project?
Yeah.
Well, and I guess since it is delayed, we'll find out if we qualify for that low-interest loan from the state before we have to actually purchase the vehicle.
And that's good with the Highway Department?
Good with the Highway Department. The assessor's report is next, and I don't have anything from the assessor's office. And does anybody else have anything? No? Town Clerk's memo, I also don't have anything from Deb.
We do have from Julie.
We have the treasurer's memo from Julie, so there are two warrants this week. Payroll is $9,079.17. Accounts payable is $18,456.57. General fund money is $15,636.04. Highway fund, $11,343.35. And wastewater is $556.35. The Town of Pollet has received another gift of donated securities to be earmarked towards the construction of a new town garage. The process last time was to sell the securities and invest the funds and others in certificate of deposits of varying terms. Please confirm that this is the same procedure for the new gift. Last year, we invested in a two-year term CD. I would recommend the same for this gift. I would like an answer on this tonight, then for the next meeting, I will have for you the status of other investments so that we might continue investing some of the other funds or choose to discontinue investing some funds. I wish you all a joyful New Year. Respectfully submitted, Julie Mack. And the motions are for payroll warrant 24032 for $9,079.17 and accounts payable warrant 24033 for $18,456.57.
I'll make the motion for those warrants, that we approve warrant 24032 and warrant 24033.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. What do you think about doing the same thing?
So I would like to speak to that. The concern that I have, and Julie could answer this, was just about a year ago, we received the other gift. And I guess we'd have to look at the terms, or what's available to us, or what the options are. But I think that we should do something before, I think two years, tying it up for another two years is too long. I think, you know, I think a year would be more than enough. Like, we should be moving ahead with this at this point. I think it's great that we're, you know, buying CDs with the money, but I think a two-year term is too much right now. Because you've got about a year, the other one's been in a year, I'm assuming, or close to it.
Yeah, it was about this time last year when we first put the money in.
Right, she told me, she told me that there's about a year left on that CD. But I think, well, what I understood, I had a conversation with her this afternoon, it's basically, she's looking for permission to sell the securities so that we can invest it in, because I, it's not coming as a lump sum of money, it's coming as security, so I believe that's stocks and bonds or some, something like that. I'm not really totally familiar, but she wants us to do the same. As long as we want to do the same, she will start the process with the bank and come back with the options for us, not necessarily, we're not going to give her permission to put it into two years. we're not going to give her permission to put it in a two-year CD, we're just going to give her permission to transfer though, the securities into.
Okay, so when she said I would recommend the same for this gift, she's not saying sell the securities and buy a two-year CD?
Not, not the way, no, she's not.
So my only concern with this was just tying it up for another two years.
Unless, unless it's a non-penalty withdrawal CD, probably not for a two-year one.
I don't think it was CDs last time, I think it was actually treasuries that we bought. And, and the, I remember being there with the person from the bank, and I believe that we could withdraw early.
So they're not CDs?
But I think they were treasury bills.
No, it says it's.
But it might have been CDs.
She said, she said, I think we did a mix.
We might have done a mix.
I think we did a mix.
Yeah, she called me, she called me earlier and, and we talked a little bit on the phone just so that I had the details on this in case we had any, any questions, and.
I thought she did say there was no penalty for early withdrawal.
Yeah, but I think that, I do think that if we okay her to just go ahead and sell them, sell the securities and then invest the funds, that we can then probably next meeting let her know the length of time on the funds. Do we think that in, so are you thinking, Rich, that in year 2025 we might be able to start building the garage?
I think that if we, if we put a plan in action, we could do it fairly quickly, and I think we do need to put a plan in action shortly. I think that should be on, right up there on our list of things to do.
Were you ever, were you ever able to talk to those folks about how they did it? Good.
Yeah, and I think that I got some good information from her, yeah.
Because my thought, my thought has been that if we do want to move ahead with it, we probably want to, like, I've been talking with Julie about us making, we definitely need to make a specific fund that goes toward constructing buildings, right, because we have the fund now that's for capital maintenance. We need to make a fund that's for constructing buildings, and whatever you want to call that. And then we can put the money that we already had from the previous gift and the money from this gift into it. And we might want to try putting, I would personally think we'd want to try putting something on the town ballot for this spring to appropriate another certain amount toward that fund, just, you know, from the taxpayers. And see if they go for it. I wouldn't know how much though, so that, we'd have to consider that. But then, then we might with, because this gift Julie said was about the same amount as the one last year. So with those two together, and then if we were able to appropriate an additional amount based on the town ballot, we might have enough to go forward with, maybe.
It's going to be a significant amount, I mean, this is a great start for sure.
Yeah.
But building now.
It'll be double that probably, isn't it?
Do you think we're going to have to take out a bond?
Probably more than that.
Do you think we're going to have to take out a bond for the building?
We'll get some, we'll put a plan together and come up with some sizes and, and some pricing.
Okay.
Depends on how fancy you want it to be.
Frank?
The select board could go ahead with the establishment of.
Something that's going to work for you.
Building fund, you know, and the approval to move the money into treasuries, which can be short-term. That would be, keep all your options open, and then that money would be set aside in that fund already and establish that right now if you wanted to. Or next meeting, whatever.
And just in reading this, my understanding was, last year we invested in a two-year term CD. So that was just, I assumed that that's what the plan was moving forward with this one, but that's not the case.
I believe it's, it's, it's more of a fact that we can transfer it into something that we can invest in the bank, is kind of the way I gathered it. Did you gather the same thing?
Um, it was definitely to turn it into something that we could invest. I thought that she might want to just put it already into the two-year, but if we want to, if we wanted just, say she should sell it and then come to us next time with what the investment options are, we could do that. Should we do it as a motion?
Okay, yeah, probably.
Okay, um, I move that we authorize Julie to accept this gift and sell the securities and, um, bring us the options for investing the funds at the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Carried.
Town highway type question?
Yes.
When the bridge is being worked on, we expect that to start in April, can, during the day, can people still walk across or bike across?
I don't know, my understanding in reading the, the estimate that we got, and Kristin, you've read over it a few times, it sounds like you're going to be able to travel across there throughout the day. That's my understanding and.
Yeah, I think they said that traffic will still be, they'll still allow for school buses and whatnot, so I think they'll probably get the schedule of when, uh, like necessary vehicle traffic is going to be going across, and then it will be, you'll be able to travel across it not during working hours as well.
I can get you some better details too, I can talk with them.
And I had, it's in the, it's in the summary, the project summary as well, which I can pull up and get to you, so I don't have to zoom through my phone right now, but.
No, no.
Yeah.
That's going to be a big deal if you have to cross that bridge to get home, right? I mean, it's going to be a problem.
Walking across would allow for a vehicle to be on this side and, and make it doable. And so there was some curiosity in my house.
We'll get some better details.
Just hope the river's low by then.
As far as I know, they recognize the fact that this is a primary route, and going around the long way is in fact very much a long way, so I think that they're trying, they're understanding of that. So that was the understanding, but I can pull the summary up and Rich can talk to the people.
I'm pretty sure there's going to be some wait times once they start doing the surfacing on there.
Yeah.
That's when.
Be some days where.
When they're working underneath, they said that traffic can just go and, so, pretty much.
I was worried about.
It's when they start doing the guardrails and resurfacing that things are going to, they're not going to pick up and move just for people to walk or drive across, so.
Thank you.
So emergency management director's report is next, and I didn't have a report from Bob, but there was an email that I sent along. There's an opportunity to, for the town to obtain free cybersecurity products through the Department of Homeland Security, so there's funding available through the state and local cybersecurity grant program to assist state and local governments with managing and reducing systemic cyber risk. Having been successfully awarded funds through this program, the state of Vermont Department of Public Safety and Homeland Security Unit in collaboration with the Vermont Agency of Digital Services is seeking feedback from state and local units of government regarding their interest in receiving one or more of the following cybersecurity-related products and or services. One is cybersecurity training, migration services to .gov internet domains, hardware tokens for multi-factor authentication. So if the town, and the message goes on, so Bob indicated in his original email that if the town would like to do that, we should identify somebody to fill out, there's a questionnaire. So my only feedback on that is I know that there was some hacking that happened in this office, and I do know that there's been some just times when we've wanted to do different things that we've been ineligible to do because we have gmail.com email addresses, and it could be something worth looking into for the municipal or the local officials to go to a .gov domain.
Our website is a .gov.
Yeah, so there's some .gov, but on a, and I don't know if that's by choice, or I don't know enough about it, but it could be worth looking into, so that's just my own input on that.
I had a quick look at those, and I don't think the training would be helpful because it was a really detailed training and we don't have any, um, town IT workers. But like you said, the .gov could be helpful, and the third thing, I did a little, I clicked the link and read about it, the, like, what, the multi-factor authentication? What it is, it's like a little token, like a little card or a little token that a person has in their possession. So when they go to log into like, say, a town computer, they would have to type in the password, and they'd also have to have a little token with them. And evidently businesses use this now as a way to avoid someone just stealing a password. So I don't know how helpful that would be, but if we have been hacked in the past, that would be a much more secure way, I think.
So far, I think we've only been hacked through our phone system, so, you know, sky's the limit for future. But, you know, hopefully we don't, but I don't know if, I'm not sure if this is something that Bob would have the appetite to fill out the questionnaire on, if that's what he was inferring, or if he more meant to have somebody else in town work on it, so.
Frank?
I've been trying to talk to people in Mount Hurie about this, is that they need to have, they have a, in the tax building, they have servers and they have redundancy. They have all this stuff in place, and it would not be much of an effort to add accounts to such a system that's already secured for all the towns in the state, so that everybody's not reinventing the wheel all over the place. It's all managed in central place with redundancy, and not only that, but to go on one Zoom account or one communication system, so that's handled at one place and handled in volume, reducing the costs and making it more secure for everybody so that we, you don't have to be deciding, micromanaging, you know, nineteen stuff along those lines.
All right, thank you.
But I haven't got any bites yet.
Did, do you know, Kristin, if that message went to Julie as well or just to the select board?
Um, that's a great question.
Because I think it would be worth asking Julie. Oh, Nancy?
It went to everybody.
It went to everybody, okay. I know Julie's out of the office for the holidays, but, sorry. I know Deb is out of the office for the holidays, and it would be worth finding out if Deb would be interested, given that she's in the office a great deal.
Okay.
So, ask a little bit more and then decide? Is that what we're thinking?
What's the type date we have to decide by?
I didn't notice one.
Okay. Nope, I think so.
Okay. After emergency management, is that wastewater or?
Health officer's report.
Health officer.
So Jennifer Sullivan shared that she attended a training given by the State Department of Public Safety's Division of Fire Safety regarding the transition for, of authority for rental housing. Jennifer plans to speak more on this in the new year once the state's Division of Fire Safety website is live.
Okay.
I think relating a little bit to the short-term rental conversation.
Now it's sewer, right?
Yes.
And we have no updates at all on sewer. And now we have facilities. Do we have anything to update on facilities?
That's, that's where the grant is under new business or old business? Where are we going, put your grant?
It's under old business.
The grant's under old business, after facilities, oh yeah.
So do we have any new business?
Well, there's the Meadowey School Board report, of which there's also none, and then next up we have old business.
Okay, so I have, I guess I have, um, we, Frank applied for this grant, the mini-grant to get the infrared cameras. It was the easiest grant application there ever was in the history of the world, and we heard back the same day, right Frank?
Yes, I was on the phone with the person when they were typing out the approval.
Yeah, so we've been approved for four thousand dollars with no match, and what it can be used for, correct me if I'm wrong Frank, but we're going to get two cameras?
Two cameras, any miscellaneous equipment we need associated with it, and we can do an education event, energy fair, social, all this stuff, up to four thousand, we got to spend every penny.
So.
And it's one invoice, we don't have to report on invoices, we just do a report that all the money was spent and what it was spent on and.
And then they send us the reimbursement, so yeah.
No, no, they're going to send us the money.
They'll send us right away. Oh, see, this is the best kind of grant ever, no match, they send you the money upfront.
Just do it every month with it.
So we're going to get two infrared cameras, which are going to be available at the library for people to check out, and then the event will teach people how to use them and be a social event, and they can learn about the cameras, yeah.
I asked if we could get more mini-grants and they said no.
No, each town only gets one.
Just one.
So, so, so what, what the, what the energy coordinator is asking the select board to do is to give our approval for the grant and also for me to sign the paperwork and send it back. So I will move that we accept this mini-grant and that, and authorize me to sign it.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
I just have one other update on, not a very big update, on the sidewalk grant. So we sent the, we had decided that the first company was too expensive, and we were going to send it to Fasson O'Neill in the hope that they, since they wrote the first one about how much they thought we should be spending, and the engineering costs would come in closer to it, wow, they failed hard.
Really?
Yes.
So it was like forewarning of what a job it was going to be, so they really got it.
Yeah, so they, yeah, they came in more than double what they had, they had written themselves it was going to be. So we're just shaking our heads here. Stephanie from the Regional Planning Commission and Peter from the V Trans, we're all in this meeting together just going, what has happened? So we're going to try to negotiate with them and see what they're thinking, like why they did, did they not look at their initial numbers? Because those numbers were from 2022, it's not like this was from before the pandemic and things hadn't gone up yet, so. Anyhow, right now Fasson O'Neill is not in my good graces. I just wanted to let you know that we're, we're going to, we're going to move ahead in some way, but we, it might get a little more complicated. I'll give you a bigger update once we've negotiated with them, I just wanted to give you the heads up that the news on that front is not great.
Okay.
We'll make these crosswalks happen somehow, but, yeah.
Okay.
So in the meantime, should we take that hundred and fifty thousand of ARCA money and put it toward the garage?
No.
That would certainly help.
Carl, you should open up an interview.
Not what we got.
My priorities are different.
New business.
New business?
Yes. Anybody have?
Have any new business? So then it's public comment, right?
Yep.
Anybody have any public comment? Okay. Now it's time to adjourn to executive session.
To discuss labor relations agreements.
All right, I'll move that we enter executive session to discuss labor relations agreements.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.